Welcome, everybody, to the Elections Laws Redistricting Subcommittee, joint with the Rules. Mr. Clark, please call the rule.
From the Elections Redistricting Subcommittee Chairman Ruck, here. Counselor Elliott, here. Counselor Chow, here. From the Rules Subcommittee, Chairman Elliott, here. Counselor Mercier, here. Counselor Conway, here. Six present.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Also with us here, also here this afternoon, we have Counselor Drinkwater, Counselor Noon, Counselor Samaras, and our City Solicitor Christina Connor, as well as Assistant City Solicitor Rachel Brown. So here tonight, discussions concerning the charter change election of mayor. I know it says strong may here, but I thought we just hit tonight just for the election of the mayor process. So I think that's probably what we'll hopefully hit this evening. The maker of the motion is present, Counselor Elliott. You want to start off a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion that I made a number of weeks ago relative changing the form of government, the charter change to allow the residents of the city to elect the mayor versus the current form under the planning form of government adopted by our charter, which states that nine city councils elected at large shall choose the mayor by way of ballot. So given the fact that we are changing the structure of our government from nine members being elected at large to eight members being elected, I like to say by neighborhood or by district, along with three at large, I thought it was appropriate at this time to also allow the residents and empower the residents more by giving them the opportunity to directly vote for their mayor. I think it provides or presents a more transparent electoral process for the mayor. I think it also allows citizens to get more engaged, more involved in their government. I also don't feel that we need to reinvent the wheel. There is a model in Worcester, which coincidentally during the discussions in executive session during the lawsuit, advocates for changing or increasing the number of city council seats referenced the city of Worcester, and that was sort of the baseline. They have 11. The structure is a little different. They have six and five, but we have eight and three. So knowing we were looking at increasing the number of city councilors to 11, I also think this is a perfect time, quite frankly, while we're going through the transition from district to district at large, to allow residents to engage and vote for their mayor. So that's the motion. We look forward to having a discussion on this, but I think it makes all the sense in the world. We want more people to get involved. That was kind of the impetus behind the lawsuit and the change to get more people involved in running, but also let people identify more with their neighborhood city councilors. And I think being, giving them the opportunity to weigh in on who the mayor is makes sense. Seems to have done, seems to have worked in the city of Worcester, so I know that it'll work better here in the city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. And we have our Solicitor here. Do you have the Worcester way they do it on hand? If you don't want to, it's fine. I just didn't know if you had it with you or not.
There is a paragraph that was included in a prior opinion. If you want, I can read it aloud.
Please.
All candidates nominated in the preliminary election for the office of councillor at large shall appear on the ballot as candidates for councillor at large in the regular municipal election and shall also be listed on a separate portion of the ballot as candidates for the office of mayor. The candidate elected to the office of councillor at large and receiving the highest number of votes for the office of mayor shall be mayor. The candidate elected to the office of councillor at large and receiving the next highest number of votes for the office of mayor shall be vice mayor of the city council.
Thank you. Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the sake of discussion, it sounds like only the candidates for at large can run for mayor. Is there precedence or legality that would allow district candidates to also run for mayor?
So there'd be nothing that would prohibit the council from, if it sought to change how a mayor is selected for the city, to adopt the Worcester model, or, as I note in the opinion, to adopt something similar to it, which would then open the door, presumably one option, which would open the door to district councillors running simultaneously at large for the position of mayor. And that's just, that's just one. There's probably other variations. And again, it would go, it would ultimately go to the state for approval. But there's nothing inconsistent with that that would rebut any existing laws except the ultimate one of changing our current method of election.
Okay, thank you. Just one more question. Just to continue on the Worcester model, for somebody who ran successfully for councillor at large and mayor, and if they, is there a term limit for, there might not be a term limit for being the councillor position, but would there be a term limit for the mayor position?
Well, again, whatever we, whatever we would adopt, these are some of the considerations that we would have to look at and make sure that there's nothing, again, inconsistent with what's happening.
Counselor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the city solicitor. How many, how many cities fall into this category of at-large and district combination, whatever combination that may be? Do you know?
I don't have a number, Counselor, offhand. We can be happy to research that and report back.
Yeah, I'm just curious, so that if we could take and make, start to make some comparisons on it and find out, you know, what, what is the most effective, you know, effective process and what makes sense, what works and what doesn't work. And I don't think you have to reinvent the wheel, but if this information already exists, at least we can take a look at it, if at all possible. Is that, is that something that would be difficult to do the research on?
No, not at all. Take a look.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Sure, I could probably provide that information to you right now. There's only planning form of government in the city of Cambridge, city of Lowell, and Worcester. Every other community across the Commonwealth, there is a hybrid of at-large and, and district representation, with the exception of Fall River and Haverhill. However, those two communities have a strong mayor form of government. So, and that's, that's the difference, I feel. You know, the city of Quincy, Brockton, they all have strong mayor form of government. They do have the hybrid, in many cases, with the exception of those two, those two cities of at-large and district. Of course, Cambridge being a community that has proportional representation, they don't have, they don't have at-large candidates. So that should answer the question, I think. Mr. Conway, I'm not, I'm not certain.
I appreciate the information, but I would like to see it so we can make some comparisons on it and take a look at it instead of, you know, again, I'm, I thank Counselor Elliott for, for breaking that down. So that should make us, make it pretty easy for us, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors Noon and Samaras, would you say anything?
Just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a noted, the consent decree that we signed with the plaintiff. Can you elaborate on page nine, page eight? I'm sorry that some of the councils don't have it, but, but I just want to hear. Maybe Solicitor can read it into the record and explain and how we can do away with what we agree with the plaintiff on. Page eight, on footnote, footnote five.
Sure. So first of all, to read footnote five. Under the agreed-to electoral system, with the exception of the, of the seven-two hybrid system, as with Lowell's current electoral system, the mayor shall be a member of the city council, elected by the city council, and shall serve as the seventh member of the, and chair of the school committee during the mayor's tenure. Under the seven-two hybrid system, seven members of the school committee shall be elected from seven districts, and the mayor shall not necessarily serve on the school committee.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just follow up on it. So if we were going to go to the home rule petition to changes into how we elect the mayor here, do we have to go and convene with the plaintiff and communicate that with the plaintiff before we proceed?
So...
Everything that has to go in front of the plaintiff for us, right? When we cut, when the city gets separating the districts, what we do, it has to be approved by the plaintiff and the judge, correct?
Right. And, and we have had discussions with the plaintiff. Following this meeting, we will, again, reach out to the plaintiffs with respect to any potential changes that are, that are being discussed. And, and so we had that conversation today, and we'll continue to keep them informed.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, Chairman Ruck. It's only natural that at this point that we'd start discussing, you know, there's been discussing what we'll do with the mayor's position, because we've made a major change regarding how we select our councillors. And I think it's important that we have this discussion. There's several issues. One, we do have to deal with the plaintiffs and the consent decree. That's, that's very clear. One of the thoughts I had was that this is important, but the thing is, the next term, there'll be a different setup where we'll have the eight districts and the three at large. And there's a possibility that we could allow that committee to make the selection, do the thinking as to how they would like to see the position of mayor be selected. That's just putting it off to another group. That's an option. I'm just talking about options and the way we can think of things. But my concern, if we just go the three at large, we did a lot of work to ensure that minority population or literally the entire population of Lowell would feel that they'd have an opportunity to get elected to the position of city councillor. And I'm concerned in a sense of that we're, in a sense, from my opinion, from my looking at it, we all have various ways of looking at how a system is set up, is that we're now preventing or making it even more difficult, I'm sorry, for minority members of the community to become elected as mayor of the city of Lowell. And that's a concern I have. And, and the issue is having three at large with the eight having no option to either run or select. I mean, what does that place, that places them in a, I consider a substandard position as far as, you know, running of, of city government. So I think this is a process that requires a good deal of thinking as to how we'll do this. And as I stated originally, I also think in the final choice, because we have that time, that when we come up with, we might be coming up with several options, that we allow the citizens to make that selection through a vote during the presidential election. But that's just some of my own thoughts regarding this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Chairman Ruck. I believe that a person that is governing the city should be at-large, running citywide. I don't feel that someone that's representing a particular neighborhood, like probably Belvedere or probably South Lowell or Centerville, you're representing that district, and yet you're going to represent the whole city of Lowell, but you're representing that district? It doesn't make sense to me. And I agree that it doesn't seem like any minorities are being treated fairly, but yes, you are being treated fairly, because any minority could run at-large. Look how well Vesner has done, and he's run at-large. So I don't buy that. I am not putting the decision on mayor as well to the next members of the council. We have got elected to do our job. I'm not putting it off to anybody else. It's this city council that should decide this decision. And having said that, I, I like the adoption of the Worcester model. And to say that the public isn't involved, bring the vote to the voters, the public is involved. They will, for once, select a mayor. Not, not five people. Five people select a mayor. If that's unfair, I don't know what, if that's fair, I don't know what is, but the people will decide whoever runs at-large, if it's minorities, whomever wants to run, good luck to them. But I don't think it's fair that you represent this group over here, but you want to represent all the people. Make up your mind. Do you want to represent all the people, or do you want to represent just one section of the city? So my vote is with, to adopt the Worcester model. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think with respect to what we approach the plaintiffs with, it's important to keep all options on the table. With respect to whether district councillors would be eligible to run for mayor, I mean, should we move forward with a popularly elected mayor, a district council would have to be on the ballot citywide and win support citywide for that seat. I don't think this council's really contemplated, you know, limiting the choices should we not move forward with any changes to the way we select the mayor, limiting that to only at-large councillors with, with no change. And that's a situation where a district councillor could potentially be elected by this body, by the council, you know, to, to hold the position of mayor. So I actually think it's, would be a good thing, should we keep it open to all councillors, that they would have to win the support of voters citywide to hold the, the position of mayor. So I think my takeaway is that it's useful and helpful to keep all options on the table as we move forward through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, with regards to the timeline, how, how long is the process going to take, once the council makes a decision on how you want to go forward?
Then it would just be a question of filing, preparing and filing the, the home rule petition.
Okay. The other question I had was, I'm understanding that once the charter becomes open, as we're doing now with possibly changing the mayor, isn't the whole, this whole charter open as it is? Like once that, I know we'll be doing the, under the lawsuit now, but technically the charter is not open yet, right?
This wouldn't be through an actual charter change process. It would, it would literally be a home rule petition aimed at one particular change to our government.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with charter change at all?
This, there is, there are options. There could be charter change, a charter change commission, and you can go through that process. My understanding is that hardly ever happens, if at all, with any communities anymore. The, the preferred method, the common method, would be if there is going to be a proposed change, that that change would be done via a home rule petition seeking legislative approval. And it would be, in this case, from what I can gather from the council, it would be relatively narrow.
Okay, is, is that the only way to get it done, a home petition?
Absent a charter change, I believe that would be the only, the only way to, to get it done.
Okay, you know, the only reason why I ask is because the council adopted a motion a couple of weeks ago, and a member of our state legislature has already spoken that, you know, he's not for it. So I'm just curious, if a member of our state delegation doesn't agree with something, that, you know, that has to pass with our delegation first and then go to the two-thirds vote, correct?
On a whole, on a whole rule, it passes this governing body, and then it goes to a member of the legislature who will file the home rule petition?
They sponsor it.
They sponsor it.
In both the House, in both the House and the Senate, correct?
It will have to pass both the House and the Senate.
Okay, thank you very much. With regards to what we're doing tonight in the motion, I do agree that, I believe that the public should have a right to vote for the mayor. I think we're probably solve a lot of problems within the council, starting off. I mean, you know, I do also like the way, the way Worcester does. I think that when you make the idea of, you know, running citywide, you know, you're out trying to meet everybody, and you're, you're in every neighborhood, trying to garner support. And I think that if you're just in your neighborhood trying to get elected, number one, and then, I don't know if you just add a name to, you know, to you want to be the mayor, you know, I think that, you know, being at-large is, you know, I think is a proper way to go. Not to say anybody else's opinion is, you know, worthy of my own, but that's just where I am on the subject. So I don't know if anybody else has anything to say before you. Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I just wanted to follow up and close, because I want to make a motion that we recommend to the council that the city solicitor prepare language for home rule petition to adopt the, the electoral system similar to the city of Worcester, or identical to the city of Worcester in the way that we elect the mayor in the city of Lowell. So I'd like to make that, I'd like to make that motion as a recommendation to bring forward, and then I'd like to speak on it, but...
Second, second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion before we go to the public?
So I think some valid points have been made, however. I also feel we don't need to make this so complicated. The voters of the city just went through, and if I, I just want to, you know, recall back to the last ballot question. In my opinion, that was extraordinarily confusing when it came to changing the form of government. I can't tell you how many people came up to me and said, "I didn't vote one way or the other." And if you look at the number of blanks throughout the city that supports that, that narrative, that they didn't understand exactly what was taking place. It's over, it's done now, it's our job. Because I don't think this, this body, we had enough time, nor did we do a good job to go out and explain it to the, to the, to the average voter, to our voters. So I feel, why mire this particular process down in the same way we did the last time with, with options that may or may not, and in my opinion, will, will not make logistical sense from electing the mayor. So I understand the point that some individuals will want to run for district, and then they will not be eligible, but it works in the city of Worcester. And to me, there's a reason behind, behind that. And it's, sometimes it's experience that you run in one particular ward, and then, you know, you continue to get exposure. No one's trying to put, and I kind of take exception to this, someone's going to be placed in a substandard position. I think that's very unfair, because you're saying that the city of Worcester intentionally puts people in a substandard position. That's not the case at all whatsoever. And when it comes to the plaintiffs, I think we have gone to great lengths to work with the plaintiffs and, and the case in itself, and we've done our due diligence. We should be able to be able to govern our destiny to some degree. And moving forward, the way we want to elect our mayor shouldn't be dictated, in my opinion, from, you know, plaintiffs. I don't think that we need to, you know, to bow down to them to say, "Well, we're going to make a charter change to our, you know, charter change." Is that okay with you? I, I don't, hope that's not in the spirit of what the plaintiffs are looking at. I understand they're looking at districts and the way we are going to present that, but I'm very passionate about this. I think if we want people to get involved, let them vote for the mayor. And I don't think we need to put various options on the ballot. Counselor Mercier's right. We are leaders. We're elected to be leaders, to make decisions. And what we're doing is giving the power to the people, putting it in their hands to let them engage more and to say, "This is who I want to be the mayor. You've earned it. You've worked for it." And, and that's the democratic process. So that's why I made that motion. I think we need to move forward. It will take some time. And it will be unfortunate if, whether it's, whatever the vote is, that, you know, a member of the legislature doesn't abide by the wishes of this, of this governing body, who we are duly elected by the people. So I'll rest. I know this will go on, but I hope it doesn't. I hope we move, move forward on this. It's, I think it's a good way to approach, and while we're going through the change, to, to get people more, more input.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Noon and Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Attorney, Counselor Elliott, that we, the council, previous council, have went into great length to work with the plaintiff to come up with the consent decree that we signed on to. That consent decree, as we, I asked the city solicitor to read into the record, that is, the footnote indicated that the city, the mayor, elect by the council. So I do not, I, I support the idea of, you elect, have the, the resident elect mayor. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. But what I don't want to do is this, that we do have agreement with the plaintiff. And before we go further to file a home rule petition or not, I think it's only reasonable, it's only right to, respectful to talk to the plaintiff, because more or less now we are doing is put the cart before the horse. I want us to talk to the, the council for the city, to talk to the, the plaintiff first and see how, do they agree with that? If they do agree, great. Then we file home rule petition. And that's what I'd like to see happen. That is the right way, the right things to do, and respectful way to do with the plaintiff attorney. Thank you.
Counselor Samaras, quickly, if I could, just ask a question. So in preparing the petition, in the meantime, when you do that, you could also fulfill Counselor Noon's request of speaking to the plaintiffs?
Well, again, there's, there's more to that request, perhaps. And that is, A, as I indicated earlier, we had already spoken to the, to the plaintiffs and kept them informed. And we will, of course, be continuing to work with the plaintiffs, and we're obligated to continue working with the plaintiffs as we look at the creation of these districts and the hiring of an expert. In addition to that, the section that was read into the record this evening does raise the very real question as to whether we would need then permission from the court to then alter the consent decree, because the consent decree states otherwise. So those are things that we still would have to explore, and we should explore those things before actually taking a step of actually filing legislation. That's not to say that the council can't make a recommendation, can't make an adoption, but, but if so, we have to consider the fact that these are some other steps that may, that may also need to be addressed.
Thank you. Counselor Samaras?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Chairman Ruck. When you look at the Cambridge, the Worcester method, that was not formed by consent decree. That's something that they decided to do in Worcester. And it's five at-large, not three at-large. So I think that's a bit of a difference. But I'm concerned about why we're rushing, to me, we're rushing to make this decision, okay? We worked very hard, and the last city council worked very hard with the litigants to come up with the process that we have. It was sent out to the voters. And we, what we're trying to say with this consent decree... And we, what we're trying to say with this consent decree, that we want to assure our minority population that they're going to have equal opportunity. And all I'm saying is that, at this point, why the rush? Why, as Counsel Drinkwater stated, can't we put all the various methods out on the table to be discussed? That's all I'm asking for. I mean, I cannot vote to make the change now, say, "This is the will of the people of the city of Lowell." I'd like to hear. We, last, last term, we had, you know, the subcommittees went out to talk to people. Granted, it wasn't a lot of people that came forward, but people who were interested didn't come, did come forth to state their concerns. And, you know, the mayor's position, it really is ceremonial. But the thing is, but it does have an important place in city government in Lowell, because it chairs both the city council and the school committee. I'm just asking for more study on this. And I do not, to ensure that when we say to our litigants and to the minority population of the city, "We are truly trying to address your needs and your issue, and we're listening to you." We're not rushing to settle a one system, but we're going to give many other systems an option to be heard. I, I don't see the harm in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Before we take a roll call, is the public wish to speak on this? Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do agree with moving forward with the process of, whether it be a home rule petition of, you know, a properly elected mayor. I did just want to ask a question to clarify the motion, so through you, just a question to the maker. I believe the, the Worcester model was, was referenced in, in the motion. And there was some discussion about whether, you know, Worcester model, you have to run at large. There was just some discussion here tonight about whether, you know, we should limit it to at-large candidates, or whether district candidates would be eligible to run. I, I think that should remain an open question. I just wanted to clarify, is, is the motion meant to be silent on that issue, whether the process would still possibly include district candidates to, to run for the position of mayor?
Elliot?
Yes, it was. Not because, logistically, if you look at the ballots in Worcester, when you're running in a particular ward, you are going to be a ward city councillor, and then you have the option to be an at-large. And then on the final ballot, you're an at-large councillor, and if, if there's a primary, and it, and it's narrowed down to three candidates, another three, there is one. So I think it's a logistical issue, not that I really think it, I do think that if you're a ward councillor, you need to run at large, as, as we all know, because you get exposed to the, all the issues of the city, which in large part, that's what you're dealing with, with the mayor. So by virtue of the model, the Worcester model and how it operates, I think it's, A, logistically, when it comes to the ballot and people voting, they, they need to know who they're voting for in the mayor. So I just feel that we don't, we should go with a model that is in place and, and works. So. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
I, just to, I want to be sure I understand this before, before we vote on it. Because I, I feel that, you know, again, I support moving forward with the process for the concept of allowing the public to, to vote on the mayor. I just, I feel at this particular point in time, I'm not really comfortable, you know, limiting the, the choices. You know, again, I think it's, it would warrant further discussion, you know, whether we do it as Worcester does, limit it to at-large, or whether we continue the discussion about whether district candidates should be, should be able to run. So that was just something I, I wanted to kind of be, you know, specific, so we knew what, what we were voting on.
I understand, Counsel, and I wouldn't oppose, as the maker of the motion, if we want to have a, have a representative from the city of Worcester come and give an explanation why they have three at large and why district do not run, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I know Counsel Mercy is second to the motion, but I, I'm fine with that, because I think what we'll find is, you have to be able to run at large. You have to declare yourself as a candidate at large. But I, you know, I'll be willing to, if there's no objection from the chairman, I'll withdraw my motion for a week or two to have some, someone from the city of Worcester come and explain their model and why they have chose to go that particular route, if, if that would be acceptable.
Yeah, I, I do think it makes sense to, to have further information. And, you know, I do want to reiterate that. I think this is a, a good motion and a good idea that, that we're discussing. I just, like I said, wanted to be clear on the, the specifics of what we're, what we're moving forward.
Sure. So I guess Counsel Mercy has to withdraw her second, then I'll.
I'll withdraw the second. But let me ask this hypothetical example. Let's say there's eight districts in, in Centerville, for example. Only one person is running to represent Centerville. Let's just say that. But they want to be the mayor as well. So let's say they become mayor. So who's representing Centerville? What's the answer to that?
That's probably a good reason why, one of the justifications behind, behind having an at-large run. But I, I think that's a good question. So she was, she was, Counsel Mercy withdrew her, her second. So I'll withdraw my motion to the next meeting to a later date, and I'll make a motion that, that the chair or through the city solicitor, city manager, request an official, maybe from the election commission, the city of Worcester, to come up to a subcommittee meeting to explain exactly why they have that model, and maybe answer an exact question that Counsel Mercy and just.
Second, second.
Thank you, Counsel Elliot and Counsel Samaras. Before we go any further, yes, sir, could you please state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Sid Lee Young. I live at 23 Phillips in the acre. First of all, thank you so much for bringing this topic for discussion. I think it's about time, and also it's a really, really good discussion if we can not postpone, but allow the community to learn more about the process, more about the topic of this discussion. This is a really important topic. As you all have mentioned, that you want all the residents to have their input. But at the same time, it's almost you have a, you know, substandard in a way that the three at large can run for mayor while the, the eight is not. So therefore, from the offset, you can see it's all almost unfair. But, for example, if I'm running, if I'm a councillor in the acre area, I can also be a mayor. So therefore, I can actually focus on the acre at the same time, you know, very uniquely. But at the same time, I can be mayor, and which working the same way as the at-large. So in the same case, I mean, this is really, really important, but I feel that Counsel Elliot has mentioned that during the, the change of the election, a lot of education and programming is not yet touched down to the community. And I feel like if we rush this, we're not allowing the community to have more input into selecting the mayor. It could be three to eight. I mean, I, you know, as long as I want the community to understand what we're doing, what's the government's doing, so that they can understand that, okay, there's an additional, you know, candidates to the right over here that's running for mayor. But at the same time, if I can see this three candidate is only coming from the at-large, while I like my candidate to be mayor as well, to me, it's unfair. You know, they, they have friends and relatives throughout the city. So therefore, who knows? But at least give the opportunity for the resident and the community to have their input, to see what they think. So I just feel that maybe it'd be a little bit rushing into this, and maybe just let the process take its time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Zoe Arthur Chinico. I'm actually on the elections commission. And I just wanted to come and listen on, on this topic, because obviously it's important to, to me. I definitely think I agree with the fact that the community needs to, if not weigh in, at least understand what's, what the changes are. And giving time to this issue would be a benefit to just, you know, everyone. The question that, well, I've kind of answered it myself, but the question that I did have was, why not? Why not have everyone be able to run for mayor that has been elected for city council? I don't understand what the detriment would be. Right now, as it stands, now, before the change, everyone has that opportunity. So why not continue with the at-large in district as well?
Yeah, maybe just to help you out, I mean, right now, the public has no say in who the mayor is, right? I mean, it's just the nine people that were elected, right?
Sorry, yes. So right now, it's just, it's just the, the councillors themselves. But I'm saying, why not? Why, why not all of the councillors, why wouldn't the councillors, every councillor be?
Counsel Elliot?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the reason. So when you're running at large, you have to, you go to each and every neighborhood to campaign and let them know who you are and why you're running. So you govern votes from every single ward and precinct in the city. When you're a ward councillor, you're only focusing on running in that particular ward. You're, you, you have a constituency in that ward, and that's where you will be focused on, because you don't need votes in the rest of the city. Unless presumably we put, you know, they're allowed to run at large. So if you're going to run at large and run to be the mayor, why would you run to be a ward councillor? Makes sense?
So, yes, that does make sense, but my question still hasn't been answered. The, from what I understood, in terms of districts and, and ward councillors, you're running to represent, yes, your constituency and where you live, your neighborhood. And at large, you're running with, throughout the entire city. However, as a councillor, the issues and the communities, some of, most of the issues are all the same. So why wouldn't you, as a ward councillor, be able to be a mayor for the entire city?
Look, I made a motion to have the city of Worcester come up, and I, I think I just explained it to, that when you're running at large, you solicit votes from the entire city. When you're running for ward, you solicit votes in that particular ward to be that representative. That's the structure of government. I, I don't know how else to explain. I, I understand your point, but I think given the fact that if you're going to be the mayor of the city, you need to go to each and every neighborhood and, and get elected from each and every neighborhood, not just one ward.
Okay, that's understood. And again, being a ward councillor, running for just ward councillor, you're running in your neighborhood, but knowing that maybe you have potential to be a mayor, wouldn't you automatically, you know, have your name on the ballot? There's, people can still vote for you, and you can still, you can still meet those people or run as such, because you have an opportunity to. But if you're limited on the onset, you would not think that way. You would just stay within your constituency. However, if you did, and there is a possibility, fairness.
I think, you know. To me, that defeats the purpose of running at large. You're running at large to, to represent everybody. You're, when you run at ward, you run at ward. But I'm sure this discussion will go on. I, I think it's a good system. It, it does work, and I do think it's fair. Nobody is trying to rush this, but we don't need to be, to have a process like we did the last time. They went off months and months and months and months. And then when we get to the ballot, there wasn't enough time for us to explain the whole issue to, to people. So there is no rush. This has to go through the legislature, by the way. It doesn't have to go on the ballot. This is a charter change. So is there a need to keep the process moving to some degree? Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts, the, including the consent decree, which I, I truly hope that's not an obstacle. But, you know, the motion was made. We'll have someone come in and have, maybe we'll have a listening session at the senior center or where else. I, I think it makes some sense to, to let people know what's going on, but, so I, I hope that's helpful. I don't know.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'll support this motion, and I think that the change of the motion, I think, makes a lot of sense, too, to have Worcester come in and, and give a, a bit of a presentation. There, there's a couple of things I want to get out here. Number one, before this, I just want a clarification through the, through you, Mr. Chair, to the city solicitor. This has to, anything we do, does it go first to the judge before it goes to Boston? Is that correct?
Again, we would be reaching out to the, to the plaintiff. It is part of the current consent decree. And so, as I noted, quite likely, the consent decree would need to be amended.
Yeah, and, and I, and I will say that.
Would require consent from both parties.
Okay. I think it, it does make sense when you have the at-large councillors, that you would pick your mayor and have the people pick the mayor from that group. Because when you look at it, and I think the discussion has gone back and forth here, but, you know, when you, you've got over 60,000 voters theoretically in the, in the city of Lowell. You know, each ward councillor is basically going to be responsible in that area of, you know, 7,000, 8,000 voters. Where at-large, we're talking about the entire city of Lowell and understanding what is taking place. And, and I think the whole idea of excluding someone from the at-large, anyone can run. It doesn't matter. I mean, I think that's, that's the good thing about it. Anybody can go up and, and run for at-large and, and have a chance or an opportunity to be picked by the people to be mayor. So I, I, I will support the, the motion and look forward to presentation from Worcester.
Thank you, Counsel. I'll just wrap it up real quick. You know, I, I think when you decide to run as a ward councillor, you know, you're putting everything you have into representing your ward, neighborhood, or whatever it is. I think if you make the decision to run for mayor, you know, people realize that you're running citywide to represent the city as a whole. So I think, hopefully, that maybe answered your question just a little bit. But, you know, that's the big difference now in the change that was brought forward is, you know, every neighborhood wants representation number one. And then we do have our at-large candidates that were run as, you know, as, in the whole city, and not just for one separate part of, of Lowell. So with that being said, Mr. Clerk, do you have a motion? Yes, please. I'm sorry, could you just repeat the motion real quick? It's been a little while since we said.
Motion to, motion by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Mercy, to request city solicitor, city manager, have representative of the Worcester election commission to come to Lowell to explain the, the electoral system currently existing in Worcester.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
It's five yeses.
All right, with that being said, we'll hopefully schedule that date soon. We have somebody come and speak, and we will schedule another joint meeting soon thereafter. So thank you very much, and on to the council meeting.
Do a motion to adjourn, Counsel.
Counsel Conway, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yeah, seconded by Counsel Chow.
Thank you.